Hey guys, it's Tamika Russell with PES Energize. Effective May 1st, we will no longer offer cable TV service. However, we will continue to offer high-speed internet and home phone services to our customers. If you have any questions, please give us a call at 931-363-2522.
Hi, I'm Hagan Haney, and I wanted to tell you about Haney Realty and Property Management. It's my dad's business, but he has a lot of really nice and smart people who work with him. When people want to sell or buy a house, or some land, they call my dad and his friends at Haney Realty and Property Management. It must be a lot of fun, because every time I see them, they're smiling. Haney Realty and Property Management is your best friend in real estate. Give them a call at 347-9150.
Have you considered a career in nursing? Nursing offers many options, specialties, and working environments. Nurses make a real difference in people's lives. Nursing degree programs exist across the country as well as online. Southern Tennessee Regional Health System Pulaski is seeking highly energetic and positive people who are looking for a career. STRHS Pulaski provides excellent compensation, employee benefits, and growth opportunities. Do you think you've got the right stuff? Contact nursing recruiter Dana Smith at 931-279-8509.
I'm Tiffany Haygood, a local Realtor with RE/MAX Southern Real Estate, serving Giles County and the surrounding areas. When you choose a local real estate agent, you're working with someone who's a part of your community. When you choose a local RE/MAX agent, you get the knowledge and experience of a local agent combined with the power of a worldwide real estate network and cutting-edge technology. If you're looking to buy or sell a home or land, I would be honored for the opportunity to work hard for you. Give me a call at 931-703-3952.
M&amp;M Staffing LLC is Giles County's locally-owned staffing agency. Owner John Brayden Harper, Cree Holt, and Mercedes Houston are from Giles County. They know Giles County and they care about this community. M&amp;M Staffing supports local schools, athletes, organizations, and causes. When you're looking for your next career or looking to fill a position, look no further than your locally-owned business, M&amp;M Staffing. Find us on Facebook, 450 Bennett Drive, or fill out an application online at m&ampmstaffing.net.
Pulaski Natural Gas proudly supports all Giles County schools, their students, and student athletes. Pulaski Natural Gas is dedicated providing safe, reliable, efficient, clean-burning natural gas to their customers throughout Giles County. While natural gas is colorless and odorless, a chemical is added to it that smells like rotten eggs to indicate leaks. Please make sure everyone in your family can recognize the smell of a natural gas leak. If you smell natural gas or would like more information, call Pulaski Natural Gas at 363-1753, and always remember to call 811 before you dig.
Pulaski Citizen Live is doing Giles County sports and community events like they've never been done before. Video of local government meetings and community events, as well as streaming of high school, middle school, and youth league games. Football, basketball, baseball, softball, soccer, and more are all on the PCL schedule throughout the year. Get your game called by the most recognized sports announcers in Giles County. So are you looking for your next meeting, event, or game? Make sure you tune into Pulaski Citizen Live on YouTube and on the Mixler app.
M&amp;M Staffing LLC is Giles County's locally-owned staffing agency. Owner John Brayden Harper, Cree Holt, and Mercedes Houston are from Giles County. They know Giles County and they care about this community. M&amp;M Staffing supports local schools, athletes, organizations, and causes. When you're looking for your next career or looking to fill a position, look no further than your locally-owned business, M&amp;M Staffing. Find us on Facebook, 450 Bennett Drive, or fill out an application online at m&ampmstaffing.net.
Hey guys, it's Tamika Russell with PES Energize. Did you know PES Energize now offers routers to their internet customers? Give us a call today at 931-363-2522 to start experiencing the ultimate Wi-Fi.
Haney Realty and Property Management considers it a privilege to help you find the right deal. Hi, this is Daniel Haney. Are you listing, selling, buying, renting, or looking for property management? Let Haney Realty and Property Management create the plan that fits your needs. Our agents bring diverse experience and knowledge of Giles County, Middle Tennessee, and North Alabama. We offer a friendly, professional, and creative approach to your specific needs. Haney Realty and Property Management is your best friend in real estate. Call 347-9150 and find our listings at haneyrealtypm.com.
Pulaski Natural Gas proudly supports all Giles County schools, their students, and student athletes. Pulaski Natural Gas is dedicated providing safe, reliable, efficient, clean-burning natural gas to their customers throughout Giles County. While natural gas is colorless and odorless, a chemical is added to it that smells like rotten eggs to indicate leaks. Please make sure everyone in your family can recognize the smell of a natural gas leak. If you smell natural gas or would like more information, call Pulaski Natural Gas at 363-1753, and always remember to call 811 before you dig.
Have you considered a career in nursing? Nursing offers many options, specialties, and working environments. Nurses make a real difference in people's lives. Nursing degree programs exist across the country as well as online. Southern Tennessee Regional Health System Pulaski is seeking highly energetic and positive people who are looking for a career. STRHS Pulaski provides excellent compensation, employee benefits, and growth opportunities. Do you think you've got the right stuff? Contact nursing recruiter Dana Smith at 931-279-8509.
Hey guys, it's Tamika Russell with PES Energize. Effective May 1st, we will no longer offer cable TV service. However, we will continue to offer high-speed internet and home phone services to our customers. If you have any questions, please give us a call at 931-363-2522.
All right, we'll get her started, you guys. Good evening, like to welcome everyone here to the Central Office Boardroom. It is April the 11th, 2023, it's 5:00 PM, and this is our monthly board meeting and agenda, or the agenda. We'll start off with a roll call. Mr. McAllister.
Here.
Mrs. McLeod.
Here.
Mrs. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. Sumners will not be joining us, he is away on required business. Mr. Brewer.
Here.
And Mrs. Smith is not yet with us, we'll see if she shows.
And I'm here.
If you can, we'll rise for a moment of silence, follow by the prayer with the pledge of allegiance by our heads. Father, you have blessed us with another day, may we act in your service. We love you, we praise you, we thank you. Amen.
Place the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes, the March 2nd.
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Next, we have recognition of our school system employees. First National Bank, Mr. Patrick Gilbert is here, thanks again for being with us.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. It's our honor to be here. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to recognize folks who mean so much to our children and our youth and our school system. First, we would like to recognize Mr. Ronna Grayson, classified employee from Goodford Middle School. Picture, alright. You can find good side there, Scott.
Ah. It's up to them.
I know. Standing. Alright, next, we have Jennifer Bergering from Elton. Congratulations. Last but not least, Ms. Shannon Bass. You go first.
I'll take the little side.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Gilbert, First National Bank. Definitely gracious contribution, those are good dollars, and thank you to our teachers and staff for achieving that, that obviously go above and beyond. We have art displayed here with us, is Brock. We'll just take recognition, Brock Wright, from Richland, from Richland Middle School. We have the art on the wall. It's like colored pencil and animation, and always beautiful to have this art here. Always, always good to see what our students are doing in that scope. It's 3D stuff as well. Under new business disposition of assets, we have three buses and one maintenance truck. Is Mr. Buzzby here with us today? Yes, he is, sorry. We added this to the agenda, looks like everyone was in favor, just add additional info on the F-250, if you'd mind clarifying a little bit.
I did check into mileage, the mileage was, I believe, about 158,000. It was purchased from a government entity to begin with, so it was pretty well worn out, and when I talked to Chuck, he said it had quite a bit of rust, to the point that when you opened the doors, they were hard to shut, and they would come open when you drove down the road. So I feel like they just, they can't utilize it no longer, they need to get rid of it.
He said the motor, the motor ruins, but, and he said that's really the best part of the whole truck, is the motor. The air doesn't work, heat doesn't work, it's shot, is what's his word, so.
That satisfies, I entertain a motion to dispose of these assets that they've been, as they've been presented to us.
Make a motion.
Motion's been made, seconded, any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Internet connectivity, the E-Rate, Mr. McCree presented to us on this last week. This needs approval due to expense amount in the long-term agreement. Entertain a motion to approve as it was presented to us at the work session.
Second. Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, any discussion, question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. I had a C on our new business, the math textbook overview, I believe we have choices decided for the teachers and constituents, and some estimated cost, and so on and so forth. Ms. Woods and Ms. Sackles and Ms. Perkins are here.
And what she is passing around is the actual recommendation of the approved materials that we have to send to the State Department by grade level, and also you will have the estimated cost of materials, which is also invaluable. So this is our recommendations. The presentation overview, we wanted to remind you of who you voted on that's on the textbook committee, so that's the first few slides. Then a updated timeline overview, I think this has been, with the implement weather days, a little crazy with the timeline, but we've made it work. Grade band recommendations, estimated cost of materials, and then what actually comes with those materials. So I'm just gonna go through this kind of quickly and let you look at who all was on there. We have representation from each school, each grade band, K-2, 3, 5, 6, 8, 9, 12. I know that's not new information, but. Then we had central office staff, as well as other stakeholders. Ms. Sarah Locke, ESQ, who is the UT Southern mathematics professor at Richland, she was able to join us yesterday and talk with those math teachers in high school, kind of give her input. We did invite a parent, but she was not able to attend. So just a reminder of the timeline, we brought, we had an initial textbook committee meeting on January 26th, then we presented the overview of the process to all of you on February 21st. Then teachers have been reviewing materials from December 2022 to April 2023, which is really longer than that, because if you remember, we had those gap years, so they supplemented some materials. So I helped, I think that helped them make their decision. And then the textbook overview videos, they were started in December, and our last one was this last Thursday, April 6th, and all teachers were involved in those, so they got to go to all the breakout sessions to hear it as well, which they had already been emailed, all the video overviews as well. So they had access to those in advance of that. Surveys were sent out to all math teachers on April 6th following that training, and they submitted that feedback back to us as well. We used that feedback to help us in our decision yesterday, when we met with the textbook committee. The committee members also submitted their feedback in rationale at that meeting, and then there was a follow-up meeting with committee members to vote yesterday at 3:30. The district textbook team met to make a final decision. That was pretty easy for us, because they were all in agreement on their top selection. So they came together and made consensus on that. And next, we hope that you all will approve this, and we'll go into the actual grade level recommendations.
Okay, so for kindergarten through second grade, our recommendation is Tennessee Reveal Math, and the publisher is McGraw-Hill. This is the rationale that the team came up with yesterday, our group of teachers, and I'll just read through it. First and foremost, it is 100% aligned to our state standards. There's not an additional workbook that you have to supplement with, our teachers are not gonna have to go out and find. Tennessee aligns resources, everything is built for them. The second one, which is very big for our teachers, is that at every single lesson, the curriculum explicitly states the eight standards for mathematical practice, which of those eight are, several of those eight are covered in that lesson. There's a clear balance throughout the grade levels and throughout the course of the school year, conceptual understanding, procedural skill and fluency, and then it also develops a growth mindset in kids, which is really huge for math, because if a kid doesn't see themselves as a math student, math can be a very, very challenging content for them to grasp. It builds mathematical thinking, just teaching students how to think, cognitively think through word problems. It promotes the use of mathematical language. Each unit has a STEM focus, and it's focused on career exploration, which is really huge for our district and for our kids, even at the five, six, and seven-year-olds to think about how this math relates to the world outside the classroom, whether it's baking with ingredients, or whether it's a vet who has to, you know, measure out milligrams in shots if they're gonna give animals. So that was a really neat component to Tennessee Reveal that other curriculum did not offer. The next one is really huge for our teachers, and it provides actually two different instructional approaches to how to teach every lesson. Teachers have the option, so it's same standards, but they have the option to do an activity-based exploration, where they're more the facilitators of learning, or they can do more of a guided exploration, where they're leading the content, students are following along, and then there's that gradual release of responsibility. So that's really neat for our kindergarten through second grade, and again, nothing that any other curriculum offered. It also offers flexible differentiation and workstations for kids, who know in K-2 that you cannot keep the whole group for a whole hour. You need to teach your content, and then you need to break them up into centers and rotate around their different levels of learning, so that's really huge. Chest is kinda heavy tonight. And then finally, this one offered Red Bird Mathematics, which is the Diagnostic Adaptive Program for students. Very much like Amplify Reading with our CKLA curriculum, students can take a diagnostic at the beginning of the year, and it'll set them on their own individualized learning path that aligns with the core curriculum. So I know that was a very detailed rationale, but I wanted to make sure we highlight and elevate our teacher's voice in this process. So that is our recommendation for kindergarten through second grade.
For third through fifth grade, our teachers chose Envision by the publisher status. The rationale that was provided not only by textbook committee members, but by all math teachers, they all had a voice, they all were able to give input, and they're all really to be committed, they have spent days and hours. As many teachers were leaving our last P-Day, they were, you know, taking home bags of textbooks to continue looking at, and they really weighed this decision heavily. So this is a very well-informed decision that was not taken lightly by our teachers. This curriculum was chosen, it is 100% aligned to Tennessee standards. There's an effective, spolled review, and what that means is that prior lessons are also reviewed in current lessons, so it's not taught and then forgotten without. Conceptual understanding is built well to support understanding. One teacher, a third-grade teacher, told me that at the very beginning of the year, these third graders start with multiplication, and that's a pretty abstract skill, but this is taught in seventh grade, and mental students understand it really well, and they have a lot of success with that. Academic vocabulary and routines are thoroughly embedded. Assessments are customized to meet students' needs, teachers can select what questions are on student assessments, they can adjust a student to the student levels. Students are engaged at the beginning of each lesson with something called Three Act Math, and it pulls all students in. Students are able to participate no matter what their level or what it is, and it just kind of engages them right at the beginning. There is an adaptive practice called SAVI. Students take a diagnostic assessment, and as they continue throughout the lesson, if students are successful with a problem, then the rigor's bumped up just a little bit and continues. If a student is not successful, then explanations are given, and they're given problems that would help them be more successful, and then they're gradually built up to where they really need to be. Students can access the material offline, as you know, we're such a rural district, and to have access to literally it is a problem, so that's a plus for our teachers. Pacing is effective, they feel like they're able to teach this within the course of a year. The assessment practice in the student book really matches what students see on the Ten Ready Test, and in some cases, it's more rigorous. It also, and this is in teacher's words, is spot on with the instructional focus documents. As they compare these instructional focus documents that outline expectations from Tennessee, it really matches the lessons within this curriculum. And for 6 through 8, they also chose Envision by status, so we do have some, we do have some continuity between third grade through eighth grade. Their rationale is that this is 100% aligned to Tennessee standards. They've seen improvements in their test scores while they've supplemented with this within the last two years. There is a parent's corner available with additional explanations and videos, I know some of you with students in our school system like me know how important that is when your child comes home with math work. Common student misconceptions are made clear in a teacher's edition, and then those guidance on how to combat those misconceptions that students sometimes have, so that you can front-load information to better address those, rather than having to repeat it later. There's pre-unit assessments that assess mastery of even prior grade-level standards, so teachers can identify what students can hope with in order to be successful before they even begin. If there's a lesson that they missed, or something they want successful within a prior grade, this will catch that. There are also related STEM projects that are aligned to our science standards that can be used in different settings. The topic reviews allow teachers to see what students are struggling with, so they can differentiate as meaning. Lessons follow Tennessee expectations outlined in the instructional focus documents. So I think this is a good choice for us.
Okay, and then 9 through 12, the publisher was Cengage, and the title is Tennessee Math: Big Ideas, and other math teachers at both schools, these were some of their comments. It was 100% aligned to the Tennessee standards, it's rigorous, it's student-friendly application and examples, trusted authors and database researchers, Ron Larson and Lori Boswell. STEM incorporated with National Geographic, so they pulled that in at the beginning of each chapter. The mathematical practices were embedded, there's highest impact teaching strategies. We had one math teacher that surveyed her students, she let them all try, you know, a different unit from it, and it was the high strength by students, I think that was important. There's also conceptual to procedural approach, self-assessment checks for students, help features such as Cal Chat and Cal View, so basically they can watch a tutorial and learn how to do it, or they can also see what students are doing on like maybe an I problem or something. So there's lots of resources for the students as well, teacher resources, it's supportive and engaging learning tools, and they really liked that it had English and Spanish tutorial videos. Of course, it was, I mean, all of these are good curriculums, so, I mean, everything that we had narrowed it down to, so it was a tough decision for them, but they all came to the table and was able to make it a recommendation to us. And then as you're looking at the estimated cost of materials, we just voted on this yesterday, so it was a quick turnaround, everyone didn't get the shipping cost to me, so that's why I have the estimated cost. There will be additional costs for shipping for K-2 as well as manipulatives, but a lot of them were able to turn it around to me. And we also padded the grade level numbers a little bit, because we don't know what the numbers are gonna be exactly, so just kind of giving you a high end on some of those.
Can you remind us again, this adoption is for?
Six years.
Six years.
Yes, sir.
Is there, is there an early renewal, or it has to be six, and then you can continue for another three or six?
They usually have another adoption, like within those six years, but right now, like with ELA being two years ago, and they're pushing math back, it's kind of messed up science and a couple other things, so I haven't really seen an updated one yet, but yeah, great question. And this is, you know, this is covering everything for the six years of the adoption, so we'll get material in the next one. And that's what the next slide, I broke it down, and just to let you know, there's 626 pages of options for all these textbook vendors and the different things you can get and everything, so that's why I tried to break it down for you, just in the one slide. And then you can see the publishers, the grade band, and what comes with it, so, and that, a lot of these things helped them make their decision too, because if they liked, you know, some of the, like Red Bird is personalized adaptive instruction and practice for K-2, and then SAVI is an adaptive practice at the lesson level for 3 through 8, and then Big Ideas, they like that students will all have a digital license, and you know, they can work on it offline as well. There's consumable practice test prep. Some of these do come with manipulatives, since we did supplement in three of the five elementary schools with SAVI, we do have some of the manipulative kits already, so that's helpful. And I think those, those schools that had implemented it gave a lot of really good feedback when they came to the table yesterday.
I know you said the 6 through 8 has the additional information from parents, is that the only one that has the additional for parents?
I think a lot of them had that embedded on there.
Okay, 'cause I like that, I think that's, that's huge.
Well, in the, it certainly, that is certainly available in grade, Susan's bought it as well.
Okay.
Those were just comments listed.
Sure.
So that, that is available.
Most of them do have something where you can view that on there as well.
Are we, are we seeing, you know, are those like QR codes within the print? Is this part of what their online, you know, rigor is in terms of what they're, what they're getting digitally from these packages, or are you, how are you accessing that content?
So a lot of these will integrate with Clever, what we already have, so students will just be able to pull up the app, and it also integrates with Google Classroom, so they'll be able to implement everything into there. Some of the stuff that's in their grade book will automatically go over, so all of them will integrate together, so that was one of the questions teachers asked me.
Especially thinking from like a lower elementary standpoint, that integration with Clever and Google Classroom will be a lot, it's developmentally appropriate for our kids, and so it is, for K-2, it's meant to be hands-on manipulatives, but Tennessee Reveal does have a student platform, and they can actually have digital manipulatives, which is really cool for kids that might have a tablet or something that they can manipulate with.
Any other questions? We were excited, I mean, we have a few people with us that were part of the committees, and appreciate all the time and work, and we're excited.
And I just wanna echo what Ms. Perkins said, our teachers did not take this adoption lightly. They spent hours, and even on our Easter weekend, where we wanted people to prioritize family, we were still getting calls and texts from teachers wanting to know more, and the rationales that they submitted were just, I mean, applaud-worthy. So I just wanted to shout out to teachers, and that's something that we preached throughout this, is that teacher voice, and it was, I wish we could have video of the discussion yesterday, because when we arrived there, looking at it, we're like, I don't know if we're gonna come to consensus on some of these, because some of them were, like, you couldn't pick between your first or your second, and, which is a good problem to have, because you really can't go wrong, but there was some really rich discussion, it was not surface level, and I just wanted to echo that again, because that was, I feel like this adoption is off to a very good start. to a very good start already.
I appreciate, our county executive, Grant Stowe, came and he administered the oath. So that was good to have him there as well. So it was a really good day.
Well, I applaud you on the process too, truly. To just have the committee but to take it a step further, make sure all of our math instructors had input on this and even one step further with the students too. I love that.
Yeah.
You know, that is quality feedback and I buy into the process and I love that. Thank you.
Thank you.
With choosing these vendors and getting these quotes, were they able to give you any kind of potential shipping date?
So that's a good question. Basically, one of them told me that their first shipment is going to Tennessee Book like this month and then another one in May. But they couldn't tell me an exact, they said it because we all use Tennessee Books. So that'll save us some on shipping costs too because they quote on the higher end and Tennessee Books a little less expensive. But they can't guarantee it yet. I mean, it really depends on the order of when they get the POs and, you know.
So no X factor, Tennessee?
Which the teachers all have a lot of resources already from the samples, thank goodness. So that's a good starting place. They have access to the online. So they have some things, but hopefully we can get that expedited and.
And then the PD day in May, that'll be to get some pre-coverage with teachers based on what the books have been chosen.
And that's already scheduled with our math consultant.
Okay.
Our math documentation.
But as far as curriculum training, some of them may be available to come do a half day on each of the ones for the grade bands. It just depends on what their availability is too.
Okay.
And they have online options and face-to-face, which a lot of ours prefer face-to-face, which I do as well. But I can give you more updates.
Just can't wait to get it.
It's been a long process.
Where are those folks coming from? Where are they from?
From Nashville, Tennessee Book area.
Shipping is, we couldn't pick them up. They won't let you do that?
If you have a U-Haul, come up front of it.
Yeah, they come on with kids and.
$25,000 to ship. I mean, could we pick it up for considerable less?
I don't know. That might be a possible option. I can definitely check on it. But I know this is for all six years though. So, I mean, that's just how we've always done it. And it will be less than that, like I said, through Tennessee Book. Those are just kind of higher-end quotes. But I don't know if, I don't even know if we probably have to rent several U-Hauls.
Curriculum sorting day is always a big deal.
Yeah, how are they delivered? I mean, do we have a loading dock or do they lift gates or?
You have to pay for the service.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, I get into that a lot. Get into arguments with Old Dominion quite a lot.
I just wondered if we could pick them up for less.
That's definitely something we can check on. I don't know that anybody's ever asked that, but. Thank you. It's a lot of work.
That $30,000 I'd have to spend, you know, I would be able to come up with something maybe.
Well, it's all the sides. They went on to each side for six years for, you know, so it's just a lot.
Just wondering.
Any other questions or thoughts or concerns? If you guys see fit, I would definitely entertain a motion to approve this math textbook adoption as it has been thoroughly vetted and decided upon and presented.
Make the motion to approve.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any additional questions or concerns? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you all. Next on the agenda, the director's evaluation. Mrs. McLeod and team presented the newly revised and made more local and pertinent evaluation process. Ask Dr. Beard, you have these in your folder now. We've referred to this. And I just want to go over with it real quick. It's our evaluation of the director of schools policy, policy 5.803. Through an annual evaluation, the director of schools and board will strive to accomplish the following. Clarify the role of director according to a job description agreed upon by the board and the director. Develop harmonious working relationship between the board and director and develop improvements in administrative leadership of the school system. This is where it gets important. The board will develop with the director a set of performance objectives based on the needs of the system. The performance of the director will be reviewed in accordance with these specified goals. At time agreed to by the board and director, the board will meet as a body to evaluate the director's performance. The following guidelines will be used in the evaluation of the process. Director will know the standards upon which he or she will be evaluated and will be involved in the development of those standards. A part of the evaluation may be a composite evaluation by individual board members, but the board as a whole will meet with the director to discuss the composite evaluation. The evaluation shall include a discussion of strengths as well as weaknesses. Both the board and the director will prepare for the evaluation. Director will conduct a self-evaluation. And board members will document the evidence used in rating the director's performance. All documentation will be supported by objective evidence. And I have to say that from what you've presented and what we've seen, all five of these main guidelines have been assessed. And then obviously, the evaluation needs to be conducted. And then we will, as a group with the director, review the results from that survey.
And none of those results will be revealed until that meeting? Like, it's just, it's presented at that time?
I guess the only thing that I'm trying to think of and I may have missed, that we have some prepared for Dr. Beard for her self-evaluation based on our criteria? Or can we do a modified version of ours, which obviously would remove what we ask? I think that might be.
That would, that would reflect each of those categories. Absolutely. We can, we can make a survey for you.
Which will be based on the self-survey that you got from last year that we based the whole thing?
Yes.
I think that might be the one.
For sure.
The one piece that's just not missing but needs to be shored up. Is there anything else you want to add to that?
I just, I do want to point out, it is, it's titled a director's evaluation for sure, but it is very much an evaluation of our full system with us included. And I felt, as well as others, felt that it is important to include stakeholders, community members, or, you know, all of our folks who work in the school system as well as parents to give us multiple points of objective data back to make a proper evaluation. You know, we shouldn't have more than just one set of numbers to look at to verify, verify data. Make sure everybody's on the same page. And we're growing in the, in the way that our, our community and everyone wants us And I don't think, Tommy, you didn't get any emails or any questions or anything like that from that last work session? I did not either.
If no one has any questions or concerns, in addition to that, I can entertain a motion to approve the director's evaluation tool that we have looked at, that has been built. And we say that we will elicit for this, this evaluation.
I would do a brief. Can I do that? I'm going to make a motion to approve it.
All right.
All that work, I can throw that away.
Second. All right. So motion's been made and seconded to approve the tool, which is the evaluation, evaluation as a tool that we've devised and that has been presented and that will go into utilization. And do we want to set a date while we're approving this on when those will be released? And it's really just an email, isn't it?
Truly, they're all, everything is built. We wanted to have it ready so if it was approved, we could proceed.
Do we have any reasons not to just do it, you know, right away or pick the right date or anything of a central office or anyone where this could just add more to anybody's plate? Is there any?
Any conflicts?
Any conflicts?
What's the date it's due by?
We just.
It needs to be done by June 30th and our fiscal year.
How long are we going to leave the evaluation process open, the survey open?
We can leave it open as long as we need to, really. If you want to do, you know, set a date, do two weeks to get that back. I mean, I think that's a fair amount of time. Otherwise, folks will forget it for much longer than that.
Longer than that, they could get, we could send a reminder.
Sure.
Two weeks, I think. Because it'll take them some time to compile what we should have sent them.
So, yes, I would say we, our next work session is May 18th. If we back up a week before that, that's May 11th. So I don't know if we want to. We could put them out at any time and give us room to compile them or whatnot.
Can I open?
If we do it a week from today, that'll be a full month.
Yeah.
Yes, you, yes.
Is that, is that, would that be enough time for you to gather the numbers that we need and the information to send out? Because I know you were randomly drawing the names.
Did you say have it done by May 11?
Yes, sir. That would be a month from today.
If we live up to two weeks, I think that's just, we can send out this week, two weeks. It won't take more than a week to compile. So I think that's.
Is that good?
And then we'll have a week on the backend to all set of time to meet up and go through the data to be ready for presentation. That's, that works for me.
So set the release date to later this week. And then set the review date for May 18th work session. Does that sound about right? Does that sound good?
Yes.
We will have, again, I'm just looking at the scheduling, we will have a special call meeting after that. So we'll try not to bottom that work session down with too much on May 18th if we can avoid it. Motion's been made and seconded. Additional discussion on top of what we did with setting the date? Any questions? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you all. Make a note here real quick. So we will release this week in a 5:18 work session review. Item E under new business, coordinated school health budget amendment. As we, as we discussed in the work session, this was so that the budget would match up to E plan. Financial management gave us those credits and debits to match up. So the checks and balances are there. E plan matches. We got that at the work session. We entertain a motion to approve that budget amendment for coordinated school health.
So, moment.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Item F, the renovation budget. So we had our work session, our lunch work session a week ago today, allowed everybody to get on the same page in terms of looking at what the most accurate expected budget as we go through these times. Also considering inflationary processes and how we're going to hit the scope of work, how it's going to timeout, everything that was presented to us. Within that, we said that we would add this to the agenda to whether we would approve moving forward with that budget. And it would be the budgeting to improve all three of the first three schools on the original renovations plan. And that also included the newly updated and fluid, and I will say fluid, budget of And again, our next steps in this would be to figure out that budgeting and process that we go through if we still yet wanted to approve that motion. And again, that's saying that we want to move forward with a new and fluid 20.4 million dollar budget versus the three-year-old 16.4 million dollar budget.
And keeping our scope of practice still the same, the scope of all of that.
Yep.
Practice, go practice, no, not scope of practice. Take my notes and head off. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve moving forward budget for the new and updated cost of 20.4 million to stick to our full scope of these first three schools and then moving forward beyond that. Any questions, concerns, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. HAZCOM program, you got the email. This came in a little bit late. TOSHA jumped in on one of our schools during county inspections. They went to Bridgeport Middle School and then we have to follow that up with our, how we handle chemical HAZCOM incidents, those types of things. Dr. Beard, any additional review on that?
So we just, we need to have board approval reflected in a minute so we can forward this on to TOSHA.
So really, it's the approval that we have, a HAZCOM practice plan in place. Those are being practiced. And I assume there were no issues with our inspection or whatnot?
We did have some, I guess, unlabeled chemicals and that's why we have to be sure we have a plan in place. All of our employees are trained in this information. We have signed in sheets and everything where we can show that they were trained. We did have some improperly labeled, or not labeled, I guess, if you will. We have corrected all of that and then we had to have this approved by you all so that we can send that back to them. We have to follow up with a corrective plan in action, just like the fire marshal was saying.
Sure.
We entertain a motion to approve our HAZCOM program as has been created.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you all. No old business at this time. Policies for first reading, policy 4.600, the grading system. Bear with me, I have a leg of, I've been a leg of one and on and then deciding at one point that maybe we didn't. We had all the dots and boxes crossed. I asked if we basically strike it from the agenda for this board meeting at the last work session. It was not, but I'm glad that it wasn't. That's a couple of questions that made me question and look at the grading policy a little bit more and see that words like shall and may can be misconstrued or be a little too left to the interpretation. Also spoke with another board member just in discussing. Also spoke with another board member just in discussing what we were looking at and trying to make this a little more practical to just normal eyes, and so then I spoke with Dr. Beard today and kinda went through what I thought my own rationale was and what I thought I was reading and what I thought I was hearing from other concerns. So, bear with us, we did not get it updated, printed in your sheet. Dr. Beard has it here, so when we're looking at our grading system of 4.6, I also want to remind you that this was recently updated, but as I look back at our old agenda, this was a policy that we updated quickly through an executive policy or handling of one and skipped our work sessions and our second reading because we needed this policy in place to reflect the new 10-point grading system so grades could be entered accurately in our computer system. So, that might be one reason why we're a little bit, I don't know, just slow to the punch on this and me and us, you know, maybe taking a little bit extra time to look at it, because it's, it still is fresh. So, as we look at this, and it is on here as a first reading, I wanna treat it as such, and we will look at updating this, but if we look at line 25, so when we look at advanced coursework grades, weighted with additional percentage points to calculate the semester average, this is what we were missing that is self-interpreted within all these documents the way that 4.6 shores up 4.602, which is, which is class ranking and so on and so forth with all of our grading system, and we refer to those. So, in keeping with the state uniform grading policy 3.301, the total percentage points or grade recorded shall not exceed 100. Signing additional quality points above 4.0 is not allowed for the purpose of determining eligibility for the lottery scholarships. That is exact language through what the state tells us in terms of lottery scholarship and how we achieve that, also through the uniform grading scale, that we're not gonna go over a 4.0. So, felt like this helped to kind of drop home the fact that, yes, we're talking about someone can make an 88 in an honors class, get three points, that gives them a 91, which takes them from a B to an A, but no one can make a 103 or a 98 and make a 101, which is what the uniform grading policy says. Did that to then go into how those percentage points can be added, honors are three points, advanced placement, so on and so forth, go on up. As we got down into the exact chart that comes from the state uniform grading system, we had may include three addition of three points, may include four, may include the addition of five, we felt it would be, and, you know, one of our constituents' parents here brought the fact that we had may instead of shall. We can change it to shall, and that puts it more precise with the uniform grading and in line with what we have deemed so far is the policy that we're gonna follow and that the state tells us to follow.
But they won't get the three if it's a 98 or a 99.
Correct.
So, that's why the may came in before, I'm sure. Because they may get it, they may not, if, you know, you shall get it, but it will not, you know, exceed, it can't exceed 100%.
The grade range is not even 100, so it can't go over that.
Yeah.
Like, it still can't possibly two points.
Yes.
To make it their 100, but not an additional...
You're just looking at devil's advocate, if we're down the road a year and they say, "No, it says shall get three points." Well, you know, if you look above, it says can't exceed 100. You know what I mean? So, it's very likely.
Exactly. You put shall in there, but also say they cannot exceed 100.
Yes.
That one you covered.
Yep. And we thought on that line, 25, 26, that's a great place to do it, and just, and just to shore that up, when we look at the state's uniform grading policy and the rule 0520, that is where we saw assigning additional quality points above 4.0 for honors and then your Cambridge and your AP classes and whatnot is not allowed for the purpose of determining eligibility for the lottery scholarships. So, we decided to include that as well. And then LEAs must utilize the uniform grading cell policy or the system. However, LEAs may adopt an additional local grading scale for other purposes. So, that is what someone could question, "Well, why can't we not do a local?" As we've discussed up to now, we said we're not gonna have two grading systems. How does that fit into our system to begin with, and to what purpose is that other than just that very localized? But then, once you're sending transcripts, trying to go to college, trying to move forward, existing in the real world, that a 101 does not count. I'm hoping through all this, it's finally dwindled down. I made the statement, I think that this is so commonplace in our supervisor administrators' teachers' field, and then we can see on transcripts that no one is getting over a 100 for their semester average. Shouldn't allow that, period or from wherever, and we don't. And obviously, since 2008 with introduction of the whole lottery scholarship, the state said, "Hey, if we're gonna give you money, this is, we're gonna tell you this is what the grading scale is gonna be, and we're gonna keep it uniform, and that's gonna be fair across the board, and we can give those monies out." Any additional questions on that? I think that we finally got to one of the more concise explanations or understandings of this. So, for policy 4.600 that we did visit back in August, but we visited quickly, the cause of putting grades into our system, we have now seen where we changed the may to shall and included the language just for defining that we will keep with uniform grading, not going on 4.0, not going over 100. So, I'd entertain a motion if the board sees fit to approve this edited version of 4.600 on a first reading.
Salute.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any additional discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, then that helps lead us into additionally into policy 4.602, class ranking for this second reading. I'm just gonna hit my highlights one more time in my little notes. So, we're adding honor roll language from policy 4.6021, and we're actually deleting that current policy 4.6021 for redundancy since this has now been added to our new class ranking as we've discussed. We're adding the ready graduate language in here as well, and that helps with not just a 21 being one of those factors for our valedictorian, salutatorium, top 10 in our honors folks. We referred to the uniform grading policy 3.301 as our guidance for our 4.0 scale. We updated our graduate with state distinctions, so they reflect that 4.0 scale, and with these changes, the system will recognize the valedictorian, the salutatorium, and I ask that we not throw the baby out with the bath water and still, and obviously acknowledge our top 10. I think it was just a little bit discretionary on how we did that, and those graduating with local honors, with state honors, and then state distinctions as well, and all those distinctions are in...
They were further down.
In this. Yes, so at line 20, this was not our last one because there was that confusion, are we acknowledging the top 10, or we're just doing top 10%? Well, we'll acknowledge top 10 through the top 10%. And I have to say, unless I misremember the graduations I've been to here recently, that Entertain a motion to approve policy 4.602, class ranking, as we have discussed and amended.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Policies for second reading, policy 1.800, school calendar, again, our calendar has been approved, but this is us approving the actual school calendar policy where we included that a rough draft will be provided by November work session with a two-year forecast. We can get ahead and be able to plan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Good. Policy for a second reading, policy 4.605, graduation requirements, this was, again, aligned with state changes, move on when ready, 17, not 18 credits. Graduate ready requirements were added to our policy, so we have consistency for both high schools, and when you're early graduate and meet those requirements, you do need to announce the spring semester of your junior year. Entertain a motion to approve this policy as it has gone through the work sessions and the first reading.
Motion.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve policy 4.605, graduation requirements on its second reading. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And policy for second reading, policy 6.319, alternative education, again, to be in line with state work policy, we had that update. Zero tolerance can result in no attendance or expulsion if a non-violated school is not available. We did talk about virtual attendance in that, noted down below, and it notes that the TCA Code 49-63402 does allow in instances for virtual attendance. Entertain motion to approve policy 6.319, alternative education.
So moved.
Policy. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Board comments. Mr. McAllister.
I just wanna thank all of our staff and the committee members and the teachers that worked really hard on this math curriculum and followed up with the board. Thank you for their hard work, and congratulations to all the teachers that were recognized earlier by First National Bank.
Dude, I really do wanna say thank you for all that hard work, because we talked at a retreat about getting everyone in the same boat, rowing in the same direction, and that is really, you know, a leading example of that, just to really get buy-in from, and input from all of our math teachers. That is work in progress right there that shows the amount that we care and the input we want back, and I greatly appreciate it. I know that was a lot of work, and thank you for that. And, Mr. Hunter and Christine, exceptional work, really, truly. It's, it's been a process, and we are in the middle of this director's evaluation, but it's gonna make it not just better for this year, but better for many school boards to come, and better for our community, and I really thank you for your dedication and hard work in that. That's all I have. You're up, sister.
I wanna say thank you, too. I know that took a lot. I know the math teachers, it took a lot in trying to get everybody involved in a concise agreement, so, and I'm excited that it's all involving Tennessee stuff to, and I looked at the books, and I feel like it's really where we need to go, so, and I think since the last time we met, too, is the high school, I don't guess he's, but the high school boys' basketball team, congratulations to them for making it to the, as far as they did for basketball. That was a huge accomplishment, so, congrats to those guys.
You know, they come up short, that means they're better than all the other ones behind them. It's a little late on that day. I talked, saw Ronnie Brinley at church and kinda talking about the 20, you know, school costs and that sort of thing, and he said, his dad said one time that today is the cheapest it's gonna cost. After today, it's gonna be more.
Oh, lose up.
So, that's something for him to think about, because inflation is a real thing. And looking on this sheet right here, retirement, we got a fellow that I've known a long time that's hanging his hat. Like you said a long ago, I think, he says now he's gonna have to go to work, but you're gonna be missed. Mike, hard to, hard to come up with good folks, and also, that one there with you on that list rate, maintenance, you know, that's, good folks are hard to replace, and whatever you go and do, wish you success on him, buddy.
I wanna say thanks to those who asked questions and who wanna do things the right way and run through it, and I think we have, I think we have that kind of board, and it's nice to see that, and I don't mind it. More than once this week, I had somebody say, you know, "Sorry to bother you or whatnot, but is that not what we're here for?" You know, and it is no bother. Would I like to get paid more? Yeah, I would, in my real job, too, but...
(laughing).
Wish in one hand, and, you know, as they say.
We do it for the comfy seats.
Comfort seats, and this one's way better. I will say, and this is just kind of an out of thing, but I think it applies to our school system, and I see it, you know, you catch more flies with honey, and, you know, I'm hoping that one day that the tide is gonna turn from what our world and our, and our nation keep, keep doing with, you know, one day it's a cancel culture and the next day it's, "You can't do what you want, you gotta be like us, and we gotta be in a box," and, you know, and I'm sure over time, I've tried to think through my life where I've seen this before, but I don't know, one of the first things I remember is the Berlin Wall falling in the eighties, and I thought that was a pretty big deal, and then now I'm like, my kids are like asking me the craziest questions that adults are presenting out there right now. But I do know this, that it's a lot easier to love somebody than it is to hate them, and we just never know what position folks are in each day, and I just hope we continue, or we can, or we'll try even that much harder to read someone with a smile, someone with a smile instead of a big question mark. You never know where that might go or what that might do with or for someone. Had a really neat encounter while on vacation last week, I won't bore you with the details, but it was the kind of thing that could've gone either way, and now I'm friends with a guy from Philadelphia that has been blowing me up and, and just motivated by that, and likewise, I'm motivated by the encounter that we did have, and it was, it was good, and it'd be nice to see that over and over again instead of what we're continuing to see, so, I guess it's be nice.
Be them.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sackowitz wanted me to mention to you all, you know, at the last meeting, we talked about the LEAP's grant they were talking about applying for, and the question...
talked about the LEAP's grant they were talking about applying for, and the question was asked how many applications were approved last time? There were seventy-four applications turned in, and sixty-six awards were made, so it's very competitive, and that just gives you an idea. I just wanna say thank you, Mary, for paying attention last year in our retreat, that just made my night when you said that.
It matters.
Sometimes when we put together all these things, you know, are they really listening? Are they really paying attention? Sounds like being in a classroom, thank you for that.
It's, it's true, that's what we are here to do, and, you know, it's, you gotta put action behind words, and we appreciate that.
Uh, announcements, so work session April twentieth, the board meeting made for that work session, uh, on the eighteenth, uh, we'll get a full, uh, feeding of the budget, I hope we have even more information and in a, in a better position for explanation and presentation of that budget, and some exciting stuff, uh, you know, with, with things on the front, uh, but, but to stay aligned and to then, you know, right after that, we're in June, and we have to have everything solid by June thirtieth, so, um, we will ask for a special call, but that will be just to approve that budget, or whatever direction we take. And then we've still got that spring retreat, Tenneley's scheduled for, uh, May twentieth.
I do, since I work weekends, I did have to, and request that day off, so I was given that day off, so just to keep that in mind, I don't know that I would be able to switch that, but I don't know. If we need to, I need to, I'll try.
Great. Any, any other thoughts, any other for adjournments? Staff, teachers, everyone who's here, thank y'all, thanks for a long day. I know Dr. Beard is that long with too, I've been listening to her cough and sneeze since about ten thirty. But we hope she gets better. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second.
Thank y'all.